Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meeting will broadcast on television on Comcast Channel ninety-nine and rebroadcast on WMDJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Abbot Nelson to make a call.
Councilwoman Toles here. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy is absent today. Councilman Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to leave the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today. Father, we thank you for this great city. And now we thank you for this wonderful season that we live in, Father. And we ask for the attitude of continuing to bless your city, continue to allow us to trust you, Father. You are a highly credible city, a highly credible city of elected officials, Father. And we ask for you to continue to bless us with your wisdom, to be leaders, to help us, to help us, to help us.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. Thanks in the Republic of which sustains one image under God, the individual, the liberty, and the justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on November eighth.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November the fourth through November tenth.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations.
Whereas Deborah Parks has been employed by the Greater Gadsden Housing Authority for over twenty-eight years and has proven herself to be a very valuable employee through her work, work ethic, as well as her steadfast commitment to helping others. She currently serves as the resident initiatives coordinator and carries out her day-to-day duties in an outstanding manner. And whereas in two thousand and four, Ms. Parks was instrumental in the development of the ASTEAM program, that's encouraging students to exhibit excellent minds, which recently completed its twelfth year. The program's two main objectives are to encourage public housing students who are making good grades to study hard and strive to accomplish their goals and maintain their A and AB averages in school. And to encourage other public housing residents to improve their grades and become ASTEAM members. And whereas Deborah Parks has been the primary fundraiser for the ASTEAM program, which receives no federal or state funding and has generated approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to support the various activities provided for ASTEAM students. And whereas this past July, Greater Gadsden Housing Authority Executive Director Wayne East nominated Ms. Parks for the designation of Outstanding Administrative Employee. She was selected to receive this prestigious award, which was presented by the Alabama Association of Housing and Redevelopment Authorities at its annual conference in August. Now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of Gadsden, Alabama hereby join in proclaiming Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty sixteen, as Deborah Parks Day in the City of Gadsden, expressing appreciation for her outstanding and dedicated service to our community and commending her excellence during her tenure in public housing. Mr. Parks, would you also say your name?
Thank you also, my wife. She had public business, she tended herself. I'm grateful to receive that proclamation.
I'd also like to recognize the Gadsden, uh, Music Club here today. Hi ladies. Whereas music, the universal language of peace, is one of the great arts and an outstanding feature of our culture. Whereas the National Federation of Music Clubs have, having as a foremost objective the promotion of American music, will stage its annual Parade of American Music throughout the month of November. And whereas the Alabama Federation of Music Clubs and the Gadsden Music Club join in encouraging and stimulating interest in American music and the enjoyment and appreciation thereof. And whereas the Parade of American Music is designed to give our own worthy United States composers recognition, encouragement, and support, and to impress upon the public of the United States that it has creative, as well as perform- performing musical artists and a musical culture equal to that of other countries. Now therefore, Sherman Guyton is Mayor of the City of Gadsden. By virtue of the authority vested in him, does hereby proclaim the month of November twenty sixteen as Parade of American Music Month in the City of Gadsden, and urge all our citizens to join in the observance and share the joy of music. And we actually have the proclamation. All that was from memory, totally. Did you believe that?
I'm Sharon Yancy. I'm the President of Gadsden Music Club, and I've been a member since two thousand and two. And during that time, we've had some wonderful programs, some wonderful entertainers, plus I've helped participate in a lot of the programs. And it is very important that we recognize American composers. Because of all of the others in the other countries, we have some just as good. And so we do recognize that every mon- every November, and we have a special program, which we've already had this year, but we appreciate the proclamation and we especially appreciate your support in the music in schools for our students, because we want music to live on for a long, long time in our schools and in our community. Thank you.
I'm Carol Arkins. I am the President-elect of the Alabama Federation of Music Clubs. And I do appreciate everything that the Mayor and the City Council does for our music in schools. If it hadn't been for you, we, I don't think that we would have as much in schools for our children. And if you did not go to this, the EYO this past weekend, you really missed a good musical symphony orchestra. They seem to get better and better every year. And I know it's just because the city is backing us and our children to keep music in schools. And we do appreciate everything that you do. And as you know, we have music in Etowah County, as well as Gadsden, every single day and night. And most of it is American music. And Alabama leads in American music. Uh, thank you very much.
Mr. President, I went to a PTO meeting last Monday, and they had the strings people there. And those were, that was just amazing to see those young folks, uh, performing like they were. And, and I want to e- echo her, commend the City Council for keeping that in our system, because you just can't have numbers all the time. You gotta have a little bit more.
It's not only beautiful music that you see there, but people who don't play a instrument, sing, don't realize how much, uh, it, it takes to become a good musician. And those kids, they go from the fifth grade all the way through high school. And they are one of the best in the United States. It's not just Alabama. They're one of the best, maybe the first two of the first. And that's been going on now for over twenty years. And so, we've had, we've had some cello players play for the council. And one of them, and got us, I've forgotten how much it was, but it was a big amount of money. College scholarship to, uh, one of the music schools up north. So, I'm he- I was here when it started. And thank the good Lord, I'm still here.
Mr. Tucker, we appreciate your work as well.
Even though Bob Higgs tried to beat me the first time I ran.
Alright, we definitely appreciate the longstanding commitment of the Music Club. And thank, thank you so much for everything you do. And I do want to echo, uh, the sentiment paid to, uh, to my, my Aunt Deborah, uh, Parks. I really appreciate her thanks to her husband for showing up. She's very busy today and wasn't able to, shows you kinda how limited they are in terms of staff, so she wasn't able to get, get here and accept it, but she was very appreciative. You know, one thing I'll echo, uh, or just kinda re- reiterate is that most people don't realize that the, um, that the proclamations are the highest honor that this council can bestow to any individual or group. So, we don't take these lightly. Everybody doesn't get them. Um, so, so, you know, we really, really appreciate you and, uh, you know, and thank you for the hard work that you've done over the years. Unfinished business? We have none today. Item number nine is a resolution awarding bid number thirty-three twenty-three. This is for site work, pad, and metal building project at Nakawal Falls Park. The city engineer recommended awarding the bid to Complete Construction LLC. And the amount is one hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars to be paid from the Christmas at the Falls account. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number ten is a resolution awarding bid number thirty-three twenty-nine for an all-terrain compact utility vehicle. The NIPA Coordinator recommended awarding the bid to Sneed Ag Supply, and the amount is seventy-eight hundred dollars. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number eleven is a resolution appointing members to the region, Regional Three-Ten Authority. This appoints Rochelle Williams for a term expiring April first of twenty-twenty-one. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twelve is a resolution authorizing special use permit to AT&T. This is to upgrade their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunication facility located at seven forty-eight Marston Avenue. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number thirteen is a resolution authorizing satisfaction of nuisance abatement lien on property located at number four Cabot Avenue. Alan Milliken has offered to pay two hundred dollars to satisfy the city's lien. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Mr. President, can I, uh, can I have a question on that? You said four Cabots, number fourteen?
Said number fourteen.
I thought you said four, okay, I made sure we got it right.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number fourteen is a resolution authorizing acceptance of property located at number eight Marston Avenue. Wells Fargo Home Mortgage has offered to donate five thousand dollars and the property to the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think this is probably the third or fourth piece of property that Wells Fargo's donated to us. And plus the five thousand dollars, we always end up, somebody buys us houses. So we always end up using around ten thousand dollars for all of it. I appreciate them doing that.
Okay, any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number fifteen A and B, a resolutions authorizing application and acceptance of grants through the FEMA Homeland Security Firefighter Assistance Program. A is for an airport rescue firefighting vehicle. The total cost is six hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars with a ten percent match required from the city in the amount of sixty-three thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars. B is for a hundred and fifteen sets of firefighter turnout gear, and the total is one hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars with a ten percent match required from the city in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt both resolutions.
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
Hey, with that, a hundred and fifteen, is that, is that all we needed right there for the fire department to get everybody on that turnout gear? Shining note? If I want to get it, with that hundred and fifteen, is enough, huh?
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number sixteen is a resolution authorizing participation in the senior nutrition program and grant. This is to continue the city's program to provide meals to eligible seniors. The amount is one hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars, and the locations are Elliott Community Center and Carver Community Center. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number seventeen is a resolution authorizing agreement with B Craig Lipscomb. This is for architectural services for the Fifth Street Farmers Market Renovation Project, and the amount is sixteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, this is just where we're going to, uh, kind of spruce up the Farmers Market. We got a window of somewhere, it says we're doing the roof and the windows, I think, or the windows are sprucing, gotta make it look real nice down there.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
So moved, second.
I think this is where he's gonna come in there and help, uh, help the people with disabilities and stuff. And it's gonna be like a win-win for everybody in there. I think it goes up to age twenty-one if I were, if I heard right today.
And it's students from the Gadsden City School System that's going to be going into the library and working in that cafe. So, it's also a good thing for some of us to go and just see how they, how they, uh, work and plus to buy food and support the Rainbow Club from Lipscomb.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
So moved, second.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
So moved, second.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
So moved, second.
Those in favor to adopt all six resolutions, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all six. Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five.
Department reports, committees, boards. Citizens reports, Eric Hutchins.
Hello, my name is Mr. Chairman.
Uh, five minutes.
Sir.
You have five minutes. Uh, please state your name and address. Uh, you have five minutes to, uh, five minutes to address the council. And again, please refrain from referring to anyone by name. Or, or otherwise discouraging the good name and character of any individual.
My name is, uh, Eric Hutchins, and I'm an attorney. I represent the Tops Organization, Ordinary People Society. And I've come here, this is makes my third time. About a month ago, I came and I spoke about the authority and the power that the city council has to reappoint or to appoint someone else as, uh, the current municipal court judge. Now, first of all, uh, I want to correct a statement I made in terms of there being a lack of African-Americans in the past, uh, being on the bench. Uh, I was informed that there was, uh, someone in the past that served on the bench. But the point that I'm driving for is, is this. You have the ability and you have the power to correct a system that's failing and it's not going where it needs to go. What I have here is documents that I have emailed to you all. I've talked to, uh, Dr. Toles personally, and back in August, uh, I talked to Councilman, uh, Worthy about issues in terms of pay, stay, find a time. And I expect, I fully expect Mr. Roberts to come up here and say that, uh, you don't discuss pending litigation. But constitutionally, you represent your respective districts. And we can't resolve anything until we sit down, person to person, and discuss these issues. I've reached out and I've tried my best. I have not seen a city council member go to the court and actually see what's going on. When the protests happened back in, uh, July the twenty-eighth, uh, Count, Mr. Roberts said that you all were gonna do a town hall meeting. That's never been done. Uh, I want to work with you all to see that that's done. What you have here in Gadsden and like any other place throughout this country, you have a really bad drug problem. When you go to the municipal court, what I see is people are going to court and they're ordered to go through the mandatory treatment program, up on the mandatory treatment act in nineteen ninety. But what's happening is, is this. The caveat is, if you cannot afford to go through the mandatory treatment program, it's supposed to be paid for. The state of Alabama has paid for it. It's already been set up by the contract that the court referral, uh, referral officers already entered into. But what in fact happens is, people who were appointed a lawyer are forced to pay money out of their pocket and to go through the court referral system. So what you have is, you have a person who is making the choice between paying their rent, food, gas for work, or whatever, paying two hundred, three hundred, five, four hundred dollars a month through the court referral system. And if they don't comply, they're going back to court, and they're facing going to jail. I really want to work with you all on this. There are federal monies out there that you can take advantage of. And not only that, you need a full-time judge if you're gonna run a court system. You need someone who gets paid more money. I've done open records requests to find out how much money has been spent over the past ten years towards, uh, the, the judges. How the money's been allocated. I have worked diligently to address these issues, but no one has come to me. The only time I get a chance to communicate with you all is when I come here. I am reaching out to Olive Branch. I really am. But when my clients are poor and underrepresented or not represented, oftentimes, my only recourse for them to be heard is to file a federal lawsuit. There are too many people that this is happening to, too numerous to count. So I'm coming here, being the voice for the voiceless. I do not like going to court and filing federal lawsuits. But when people were afraid to be heard and to be seen because the way they're treated in the court system, this is what I have to do. So I'm asking you all, you can talk to me person to person, as in the Bible. We have an audit against your brother, go to your brother one-on-one, and I've done that. I've sent emails, I've reached out, I left my phone number. There's nothing I can do to sue you all individually. The city has to be sued, you all have immunity individually. I cannot sue you individually as city council members, you are protected upon the First Amendment. So I ask you, let's have that town hall meeting, let's get together, let's show the people that we want to stand together. TOPS, S E L C, other organizations, but I ask all the churches, white and black. I'm a member United Methodist Church down in Alexandria City. I've already reached out, and I'm trying my best to get in contact with the uh district superintendent up here. There's a real problem with drugs, there's a real problem with crime, and the only way it can be changed is gonna start with the churches, it's gonna start with us working together. I'm a person of faith, I'm asking the churches, I'm asking you all as people with faith to join me as a Christian, and let's sit down and let's talk. I'm a vigorous advocate for the voiceless. So today I ask you, when we walk out, please approach me and let's talk. Thank you and God bless you.
Remarks by the mayor and councilman, the mayor. Councilman.
I just got a quick one, I just wanna tell everybody I appreciate all the cards, the letters, the concerns. Had a, on my back surgery, I appreciate everybody brought the food around to the house, if you called or came by or just found out I had the surgery and didn't want to bother me, I appreciate that. I'd be not fanned if I didn't say the lady brought the peanut butter uh pie back, it really was good and I really appreciate that. Thank y'all for everything.
Welcome back. Councilman.
That's it, I just want to thank everybody for participating in the Gadsden et al Patreon Association lunch on last week, and I hope everybody enjoyed the parade. It was really something, and we do appreciate, and the honorees, remember this.
And again, do want to welcome Councilman Cannon back, just wasn't the same without, without you being here. I will uh, and, and do want to just remind people that he did just recently have back surgery, so if you saw him standing up, it was because he was trying to relieve some of the discomfort or maybe the stiffness, so. It wa- wa- it wasn't for any other reason other than that. Couple of announcements here, due to the Thanksgiving holiday next week, Thursday's garbage route will be collected Wednesday, and Friday's pickup will not change. Also please uh be aware that landfill will be closed, the landfill will be closed on Thursday and Friday and will reopen on Monday, November twenty-eighth. Also have a, an announcement here from the Carver Community Revitalization Committee. Uh, it's their annual Christmas parade. Let's see, it looks like the parade will actually be set for, or it has been set for the second Saturday in December, which is the tenth of December at five P M. Uh, so again, any group that's interested in participating should uh, should, should reach out to the Carver Community, Community Revitalization Committee. Uh, I, uh, they've noted Diane Glass Presley as a contact person, uh, or as the chair of the parade committee. So, uh, again, if you're interested, Mrs. Presley's number is two five six three nine oh zero three one five. Is there anything else? If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.